Good evening again, welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Hartford Common Council. All proper notices were sent, I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask if you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, real call, Lori.
The mayor and all other persons are present, and Sakura, who is absent and excused.
Thank you, we have before us a unanimous consent agenda, President Hagy seconded by older person Garza.
Motion by elder person Hagy seconded by elder person Garza approving the common council minutes of September 13th, 2022.
Any comments, questions, discussions, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carried, thank you. Communications, Lori?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay, we do have some appearances. We have Bonnie Barwald, President, and Jim Barrett, Vice President, Student Services, from the Moraine Park Technical College, which shows up on your property tax bill every year, so we love to see when they come over here and tell us all the wonderful things they're going to be doing.
All right, thank you for the opportunity to share our vision with you this evening. I'm Bonnie Barwald, President of Moraine Park Technical College. With me tonight is my colleague, will be jointly sharing this presentation, Mr. Jim Barrett, who is our Vice President of Student Services. So, again, we want to share with you the details and information regarding a proposed $55 million referendum, which will be on the November 8th ballot. And we have a PowerPoint presentation that will take you through the handouts that I gave you a little bit earlier. This are really a summary of what we're going to be going through with you this evening. And we'd be happy to entertain any questions after our presentation. So before we begin, we actually have a little video to kind of talk a little bit about the connections we have with our community members. If we can get this going, and if not, we'll skip it. Nope, gotta go back to, it's the first slide after the title.
So you'll be adding an audiovisual class?
Yeah.
Very cruel.
Here we go. Let's see if this lets us do this.
Didn't like that.
It's a very nice video. It might have to do with the internet connection and the security. One more try.
One more try and then if not, we'll skip.
Okay, here we go again. All right, I'll try this.
Not that one.
It's not letting me do it. Maybe it's launching it. No. Open Google Chrome instead. Okay, so I'll skip it, Bonnie.
Okay.
It's not cooperating fortunately. Technology never does that, right?
Technology's great, only when it works. Trust me, it was a really cool video.
It is, it's a great video, yes.
They can send us a link afterwards, that's not a problem.
Can you go back one?
Yeah, it's, is this weird, the controls on this thing? Switch the window here, maybe that'll let me do it. There we go. Okay. That's close. Now we're too far ahead again, isn't it? I'm sorry, it's just not responding the way it typically does.
If you hit the left arrow, it'll go back slides on the keyboard.
Yeah, it's, uh, let's try that, thank you. Using the virtual, the ones on the software, and I think that's the problem.
Justin's gonna take us to Snapchat?
What it's doing, it's hung up. Sorry about that. Okay. Here we go.
This works. We could use up to three glorious minutes.
There we go, okay, hang on. I think we're in business, it's gonna take a second.
All right, well, let me just talk about the Moraine Park, so you can keep it there. So the Moraine Park mission. So we just want to share with you that our mission in and of itself is really to create innovative learning experiences for all of our learners, whether they're young or not so young. And our vision statement is really to focus on lifelong learning. So we are, as a technical college, not necessarily a college that trains the 18-year-olds. Although we do have some of those folks, our average age is 28 years old. And we train anybody in high school age all the way up until their 80s, for some of those folks who come back to us for their GED or HSED. By state definition, we have a couple different purposes by statute. First of all, we're to provide technical training for residents of our communities that are within our district. So we're not here to train people for employers in the Milwaukee area, or the Fox Valley area, or in the state of Wisconsin, but primarily for other regions that we serve. We also provide customized training for the businesses in our district. For example, we have an Economic and Workforce Division. I know they're currently doing some work with Bron and also Signacast and some others. And then the third really purpose statutorily that we serve is to provide higher-end educational experiences for our high school youth. So if there's an opportunity for advanced education and credentialing that we can offer that the high school cannot, we offer that opportunity to provide training for our high school youth. You saw a map a little bit earlier regarding the actual district. So again, I want to remind people that our district covers all of four major counties. Fond du Lac County, Washington County, Green Lake County, and Dodge County, and portions of six other counties. We actually have over 360,000, a population of over 360,000. We cover 131 municipalities. And I say that because it's important, because in our 100-plus year history, we've never had referendum debt ever. And so when we talk about that, there's 131 municipalities who will have that, this question on their ballot this November. And if it's approved, the tax burden for any of the projects, regardless of where they're located, would be paid for by residents of those 130 municipalities. And the ballot is going to be on four projects. Either it's going to be approval of all four, or it will be a no vote for all four. So it's either all or none, there's no opportunity to select. We typically touch the lives of 12,000 people a year, and we typically award over 2,000 credentials a year. So on Election Day, so we caught up to the slideshow, on Election Day, November 8th, you will see, if you haven't voted yet on absentee ballot, you will see a question regarding approval of a $55 million for, $55 million referendum for Moraine Park on the ballot. A little bit about the timeline. So I want everyone to be aware that we actually started this conversation regarding a referendum back in late 2020 during COVID. So this project has been two years in planning. It really quite frankly started with conversations with employers. For those of you who are in employment right now, you know that there's a critical labor shortage, and it's only going to get worse over the next 10 to 15 years. And so we wanted to respond to that by taking a look at how we can enhance our facilities and programs to meet the needs of the employers. And I think most of you know, the COVID actually accelerated the Great Resignation. And so the critical shortage is actually upon us now, and we don't really have time to plan for the next few years. So as noted on the map here, we started our planning back in late 2020. We actually did a ton of research last spring to take a look at what programs might make sense and which locations. What do the job projections look like? We spent a lot of time over the last summer prioritizing and brainstorming ideas, and we narrowed it down to five projects. And those five projects totaled $75 million. We went out to a voter survey back in April of this year. Those surveys came back and said we would support not five projects, but only four projects, and not $75 million, but only $55 million. So we listened to the voters that responded to the survey. We talked to the board about the survey results. The board held the public hearing back in July. And just last month, in August, the board approved moving forward with the four projects. Next slide, please.
It's a bit of a delay.
I'm sorry?
Bit of a delay.
Bit of delay, oh, okay. So we want to talk a little bit about the need. A lot of people really want to know, is there a real need, what's the need? So a lot of reasons are listed here. It's really, as I mentioned, this is, 90% of our projects that we'll be sharing with you tonight are employer-driven. It's primarily manufacturing, healthcare, and public fire training service. We know in talking to our employers that the jobs that are there today will not necessarily be the jobs of tomorrow, and we want to get ahead of the training. And a lot of people, when I make this presentation, they ask me, well, are you going to be able to create more workforce? And I say, no, that's not something we can do, we can't create more bodies. But what we can do is upskill and re-skill the people needed to make this happen. And so that's what we're looking to do. We want to address the evolving technology, which is moving so quickly. We want to provide greater access and align our programs and trainings with the community. One of the things most people don't know is, unlike other colleges, maybe especially the state institutions, our technical college system by statute is not allowed to borrow more than $1.5 million every two years for facility expansion. So 30, 40 years ago, a million and a half dollars created a pretty decent footprint, not so much today. I think most of you know that with the rising costs of construction. We're not able to generate enough dollars for $1.5 million to create the footprint we need. And so the only other option for us is to go to referendum, or to raise, you know, the $55 million through private funding. I'll just make sure I covered the important pieces. I know I don't want to take a ton of time this evening, go ahead.
Just go up here.
Okay, thank you. So a lot of people, again, when I do these presentations, they say, Bonnie, what happens if the referendum fails? What will happen? And I said, well, first of all, some of the remodeling projects, which you'll hear about from Jim, we can do those incrementally over the next 15 to 20 years. Some of them are quite large, and we won't be able to unless we raise dollars to do that. But the capital expansions, the actual new construction costs, which is primarily all of what we're going to be talking about here in Washington County, will not be an option. It's just too costly without referendum dollars. We certainly want to keep our workers in the communities that we serve. If we don't continue to update and expand programs and enhance the technology and refresh the technology and equipment and spaces, learners will go to other campuses, other districts, other colleges. And as I share with most people, I don't know about folks that you know in your lives that go to colleges, but in my situation, you know, once a learner goes to a different community, they often will get connected to internships, co-ops, other relationships with employers in that particular district, and they often tend to move. And we've got a strong history of keeping our learners within our district. So again, I'll have Jim talk to you a little bit about the four projects in detail. Again, there's more information on the sheets that you have there.
Thank you, Steve, appreciate it. Okay, so I'm gonna take you on a tour of the projects then. So the first project is, it's our Fond du Lac campus. And the project is going to be to design an advanced manufacturing and trades revamp of a particular building and to expand. And so we would get a 15,500 square foot addition for an integrated manufacturing and robotics training center. And much of that is paid for by donor dollars from the businesses in that area of the district. And some of the referendum dollars will be used for site work and adding an entrance to that part of the building, and doing some work in the parking lot. We also need to move our welding lab, which is currently co-located in the health wing. We need to move that, and that's not an inexpensive proposition, moving the welding lab. So that's all part of what the referendum would cover in this expansion, but we've been very fortunate to have donors that would help us out with that. And these spaces, I mean, and some of you are in manufacturing, so you know, but these robotics and automation spaces, you need a big box to work in this. And it needs to be a space that can be flexible, and you want to co-locate programs that are going to work with one another in that environment. And so that's what these spaces are designed to do. So that is a big project for us, and it's something that we're hoping to start next spring. So, the next project is going to be to expand our ability to do manufacturing and automation robotics in West Bend. And, oh, here we go, sorry, it's catching up with me and now it may skip. So right now, the West Bend campus does have some space, but it's not large enough. Again, you need a fairly large space to be able to do these particular types of technologies and do them really well. And certainly, living in this part of the world, I live over in Slinger, but I know there's quite a bit of industry here in Hartford, right? And so there's automation, and there's production facilities. And so we would be serving this part of the county, I think, fairly well by expanding that location. We do have a facility right now in the Jackson community, which is a smaller facility where we do welding and some metal fabrication. We would be moving that to the West Bend campus to consolidate that, to get some efficiencies from that, and to better serve those students who are at that smaller location at this time. And, you know, I would say, you know, I think, you know, again, the community would be well-served, being that, you know, we're talking an expansion of that campus by 46,000 square feet. And it's something that is very much needed down in this area. And again, as Bonnie indicated, much of this is coming from the employers. It's also something that'll allow us to expand apprenticeship in a number of manufacturing trades too. So we're very excited about that. That project would cost about $18.5 million. And we're hoping to engage that beginning in November '23 with completion in August '24. The next project, which is up there already, is a fire training facility. We have over 50 fire departments that we serve across our district. It's one of our responsibilities, as a technical college, is to train fire departments, both volunteer and otherwise. And there's about 40 rural fire departments that don't have training facilities. So some of the large municipalities do have them, but they're not scheduled in a way that we can access them, and they may not have everything that we need there to do the full training. And so what we're looking to do is, we have, we do that training right now on our Beaver Dam campus. And if you've ever been there, it's kind of landlocked, we have a high school right next to us there, and it's not a lot of room to expand. So we're looking to acquire property and build a small facility with a training center there so we can do controlled burns and practice. We're also looking to put a pond in there so that we can train people, trying firefighters and paramedics on water rescue as well. So it would be kind of a full-service space, and we're looking to put that somewhere in Dodge County at the moment. So again, dependent upon property. That's a $9.3 million project, and it does need to be centrally located. We're trying to get it as close to the highway as we can because we want it to be easy for the fire companies to come from around the district, especially the rural fire companies. So we're hoping that that will, you know, be completed a little, it'll be a little later, but July begins in July '23 and ends in December '23, assuming all things occur. The last project is a modernization of our Health and Human Services facilities up in Fond du Lac. Our ones here in West Bend are very contemporary. And those, there's a huge demand for healthcare, as all of you know. We do our very best to serve that by having nursing, a nursing program in each of our campuses, and also making sure that we have robust healthcare training facilities at each of our campuses. And the Fond du Lac facility is an older space, so we would be remodeling that 22,000 square foot space and adding an 11,000 square foot space for nursing and also healthcare servicing program expansion at that campus. We're hoping also to increase our simulation space. So by putting programs next to one another in that space and simulating real-world situations, and these simulators, if you've ever seen them, are amazing. They are life-size mannequins that you can control, they can have heartbeats, you can do bloodwork on them, they can even give birth. I mean, they're pretty amazing pieces of equipment, but they're, as you might imagine, not terribly inexpensive pieces of equipment. So they really are amazing. But this is what our students were learning on when they weren't able to work in a hospital during COVID. And so they're learning what that patient experience is going to be like, they're learning how a body will react, and we can control those simulations in those spaces. But we need more square footage to do that so that those programs can be co-located. So that program, that project would cost $13.3 million, and we're hoping to start that in July '24 with completion sometime around June '25.
I want to flip the switch. So a couple pieces of information that we didn't share with you yet. So again, I told you that we did a ton of research into job openings and program growth. Excuse me. One of the things we didn't share is, within our district, within primarily four counties, in the next 10 years, there'll be 14,000 job openings in manufacturing, 14,000. In healthcare, that number is 8,000. So that's why we're focusing so heavily on manufacturing, both in Fond du Lac and in West Bend. And a lot of other people are asking me, why do you need to build facilities in both locations? And so one of the reasons I wanted to share that question with you is because, in addition to training the learners like we do today, we are actively conversing with all the local high schools to make sure that we have capacity and space to do more advanced early credentialing for the high school learners in our campus, where the high school doesn't have either their credentialed high school faculty staff or the facilities, equipment, or technology. So I know for a fact that next week, Dean Pete Rettler is meeting with Kewaskom, Slinger, Hartford, and West Bend High Schools to talk about how we can utilize this new space. That's the intent of why, a reason why we're needing expanded space. Same thing is happening in conversations in Fond du Lac County. Additionally, we are busting at the seams right now when it comes to customized training for our employers. So again, we have a division that will allow us to either go out to an employer to provide training, or those incumbent workers can come to our campus for training. And right now, we have to say no to a lot of those employer relations and contracts because we don't have the space to do the training on-site. So again, the expanded space would be used for employer training, high school training, so they can get credentialed earlier and get employment shortly after high school. So with that being said, the last slide I have for you tonight is the cost impact. This is a capital referendum, means there has a start and end date, a maximum of 20 years. We may or may not extend that. We are very fiscally prudent. We typically borrow equipment on a five-year payback cycle and facilities on a 10-year payback cycle. We are AAA credit rated, and so we'll see how this folds out. If we borrowed all $55 million in the first year, which we won't, it'll probably be over three years, the full cost of borrowing all $55 million upfront would be 21 cents per $1,000 of value. And that equates, as noted here, for a $100,000 value, $21 a year. And that's an investment that we are asking our voters to consider and support. So that's what we wanted to share with you tonight. There's a follow-up slide that shows where there's a lot more information, including the sheets that I handed out for you this evening. Some people ask, what happens if, again, if it's not approved tonight? The next, or tonight, in November. If it's not approved in November, the next opportunity we would have would be November of 2024. So that would just delay the projects two to three or four or five years from completion if it's not approved this cycle. So there, we will stop and entertain questions or comments.
I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
First, is what you just said, so if you don't get it, you're just going to keep coming back until you do get it?
I don't know.
Oh, you don't know, okay.
I don't know, I think that's a conversation we need to have with our board.
Okay.
I think it depends on the vote mix.
Okay. Couple of things, you mentioned that if students go off to different campuses and that they might not necessarily come back. I'd like to give you three examples of the three daughters that I have. One went to Ripon College and then did her graduate work at the Mayo Clinic down in, yeah, in Rochester, Minnesota. Thank you very much, she's now living in Erin with her husband and children. I have another daughter who went to UW-Milwaukee, she came back and she's teaching here and living right in Hartford. I have another daughter that went, in fact, which is the question that I have to the fire deal, in Waukesha. She is now also living in Hartford, so.
Excellent.
There are such things as boomerangs, some of them do actually come back.
Absolutely.
And I got three of them, so I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that there are people that love Hartford enough to want to come back. Or at least Washington County, so that's one. Two is, on the fire, and that's the one that I have a question, and I believe, Steve, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, don't we use Waukesha? I mean, my daughter, who's on the fire department, went to Waukesha.
Paul is here.
Oh, he is?
Since the chief is here.
Paul, okay. And, you know, we use Waukesha, you'd have to come up, chief, and grab a microphone so you could speak to that. So, and I thought it was serving us very well, and please understand, this has no criticism as regards to what you could do, but if you're going to take our tax dollars and replicate a service, it's like, well, gee. I'm just curious how you do it, because Waukesha seems to be working out.
We actually send a lot of our people to Moraine Park as well. The Waukesha County Technical College might have a little bit more structure, stereotypical college course schedules that fits some people's schedule a little bit better if they're trying to get through a program quicker than others. Moraine Park currently is working on a Fire Protection Technician Associate Degree Program, which should be up and running within the next year. But the training facilities that Waukesha Tech has down at their campus near Pewaki is an upgrade compared to what Moraine Park has at Beaver Dam.
Right, okay. And that's just something I just wanted to comment on, I want to make sure that if we're going to be spending this kind of money, we're not just replicating something to be competitive, we're actually, you know, doing a need that is not currently served. And that, on that particular one, only because I have some experience. I mean, my daughter went through, she's a level, upper-level firefighter, went through EMT, she's a paramedic, and she did all of that at Waukesha.
Sure.
And that's why I was curious as to if we're just looking to spend money so we can say, well, we've got it too. When, at least for Hartford, I don't necessarily know, because obviously we're in the southern part, we're pretty close to Waukesha. I can understand, you know, somebody up in Ripon might find it a little bit more handy to have something in Beaver Dam, but, you know, I don't worry about the people in Ripon.
Yeah, no, you're right, I think people that live on the fringes of our district that are close to neighboring technologies, they might well be served, depending on where the person lives, by the neighboring district. But as you mentioned, or as Jim mentioned, we serve about 50 fire departments, and so we want to be able to serve those that aren't on the fringes as well.
Okay, thank you, anybody else have one?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say thank you for coming to present this. And I'm assuming you talked to lots of employers in Washington County, and a lot of this is based on sort of what they're asking. Were any of those employers in Hartford that you spoke with, since we have sort of like a large manufacturing community here?
Yeah, so we did. Yeah, so, we did feasibility study, actually, back in twenty, let's see, twenty-twenty-one. I would say Bron, Signacast, Cerrograph, Milwaukee Tool, Metal Craft, some of the smaller tool and die shops, which I don't have, Willer Tool and Die, Mann's Automation, those are the ones that come to mind.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? If not, thank you very much. We appreciate your time, and very thoughtful, very thorough, and thank you for the handouts. Those will come in handy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
At this time, we do, I'll ask for citizen comments to anybody wishing to come up and speak to the city council, address anything, any city resident. Welcome to come up to the podium. You get three glorious minutes. Going twice, going three times. If not, we do have a scheduled appearance. Bonnie Bearwald, the president, oh, wait, that's, we just had them from Moraine Park. We don't want you to come back again, although we enjoyed it. Okay, next one is the mayor's report, which is recognition of Dennis Albrecht. For thirty-four years on the Police and Fire Commission, I invite our chief to come up and say a few words, and I will be then happy to present Dennis with a plaque for the city's sincere appreciation for that much time on the Police and Fire Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't expecting this. I don't have anything written down. And I was at the last meeting, of course, with Dennis this last month, so we had a little bit of a melancholy moment there. If you didn't know, Dennis actually was part of the group that appointed me. And were he to have stayed, oh, just a few more years, he probably would have seen me retire as well. But I would say, I guess specifically to Dennis, and I mentioned this before, thank you for your thoughtful consideration, at least in the time that I've been chief, and for the chiefs that you've worked, I guess, with, and how many, how many was it? Did you tell us it was maybe four total? I was going to say three, but four. But thank you for your thoughtful consideration, and I would say that doing something like public service and what he's done for thirty-four years really takes a lot. And I extend that not just from, you know, Dennis's perspective and what I've seen him do, but it's a thank you, obviously, to helping us make the decisions that we do. But it's also a thank you to the common council and mayor for the job that everybody here does as well. And thank you, of course, for appointing Dennis the couple of times that you've been mayor. It's been great for me to work with Dennis all the years. And I hope that now, after the thirty-four years that we've had you here, we still hear from you, but you get to do what it is you'd like to do. I understand you're moving away, but hopefully, we continue to hear from you. So, thank you very much for your service to this community. It is greatly appreciated by myself, and I know probably the fireside as well. So, thank you so much, Dennis.
Thank you very much. Dennis, if you'd like to step up, please. On behalf of a very grateful city, a sincere thank you very much for thirty-four years of meritorious service on the Police and Fire Commission. Obviously, you set the example, and because of that, we're having the police make it so you can't leave, so.
Thank you very much.
If you'd like to say a few words?
I will keep this very brief, just sort of like I do in commission meetings, right? This has been an honor and a privilege to serve in this position for thirty-four years. I've seen chiefs come. I was involved in hiring of chiefs and many officers. And now, I think it's time for me to go because I see some of those officers. There was a retirement party for somebody. That was not one of my first ones that I was involved in the hiring of. But thank you for the common council for supporting, and the mayor, supporting what we do or did as a commission. Thank you very much.
Outstanding. Our next item, discussion and consideration of appointing Thomas Stapleton to the Police and Fire Commission, and then Scott Rafeke to the Plan Commission to take Tom's spot. I would look for a motion to approve. Wayne, seconded by Doug?
Motion by Alder Person Rosniak, seconded by Alder Person Carroll to appoint Thomas Stapleton to the Police and Fire Commission and Scott Rafeke to the Plan Commission.
Any discussion? Hearing not all those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose no. Motion carried. Thank you. Aldermanic requests, President Hegy.
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alder Person Rosniak.
Well, congratulations to Dennis Albrecht.
Not all good.
And Dennis, we're going to let Lodi know that you're available on their Police and Fire Commission. We get a memo off to Lodi.
Thirty-six hundred people, they don't qualify.
They don't qualify?
Five thousand.
Do they have a police department?
Yes, they do.
All right, well, there you go.
Either way, good luck.
Okay. Alder Person Carroll.
Just a thanks to Dennis and nothing else.
Thank you. Alder Person Garza.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alder Person Turchi.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alder Person Webb.
I just wanted to say congratulations to Dennis that he finally got away from Hartford. And I just want to say personally, Dennis was extremely kind to me when I joined the Police and Fire Commission. I have a lot of respect for him and for the work that the Police and Fire Commission does. And so, I really appreciate that kindness and have a lot of respect for you, and I wish you the best.
Thank you. Alder Person Kohler.
Yeah, I just want to thank you also, Dennis, and your family. I know when you're on the, up here serving for us, your family is as well, missing you on evenings and so on and so forth. And so, I just want to thank you and your family for the great service you have given us, the city of Hartford.
Alder Person Fulop.
Good luck, Dennis. Thank you for your service. That's all I have.
Thank you again. Okay, standing committee reports. We have a lot of nothing. Go right to the city administrator's report with our city administrator, Steve Volker.
Yes, tonight we'll be discussing and considering the authorizing appropriate city officials to execute the contract documents for the CDBG accessibility improvements at Independence and Woodlawn Union Parks with J. H. Hassinger Incorporated, Menominee Falls. And our city engineer, John, is here to go through that, those in numbers.
Good evening. The CDBG project, I've been working with the planning department and Parks and Rec, and we have had identified four projects. The Centennial Park, Willowbrook Park, Woodlawn Union, and Independence Park. Based on the way the bids came in and the available funding through that grant program, we staff decided that it would probably be best to knock out the easiest work for the highest-volume restroom facilities, those being Woodlawn Union Park and Independence Park. And Willowbrook Park, we dropped that off simply because it has some very unique masonry requirements and some custom doors that would have to be manufactured or built onsite or in someone's shop for the project. There just isn't enough time to spend the money by the end of December. So, that and the Centennial Park scope, we set aside for future projects. And our recommendation is to take advantage of the opportunity to use this federal funding to really make some significant improvement at both Independence and Woodlawn Parks to make the exterior access to the restroom buildings accessible, and as well as the interior facilities, the toilets, the sinks, and so forth. So, our recommendation is to move forward and get Hassinger to work so we can get those taken care of before winter.
The dollar amount?
I'm sorry. Dollar amount is one hundred and eighty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-six. That is for both projects, Independence Park being a hundred and three thousand and change, and Woodlawn being seventy-nine thousand. Essentially, entire rebuilds of the interiors of those facilities, walls are moving at Independence Park. The exterior wall is moving out to be able to get the room, the turn spaces and so forth in the restrooms. And I think when it's done, it'll look beautiful, and we'll have at least tackled those important locations to make them accessible.
Thank you. Discussion by council. Any questions, comments, concerns? Yes, Wayne.
John, what will you do with Centennial Park next year? I mean, those things are going to get done next year, right?
Yes. There's just, we're trying to force as much work into this grant before the funds expire, and that's the only reason why we had to punt the other ones out, because we just couldn't physically get them done before the end of the year.
We don't want the public to get the impression that Centennial Park, there's not going to be bathrooms, nothing's going to be done there. That's not the case.
No, sir. It's out, the pavilion project is out to bid, and those are due next Thursday, October sixth.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just, being part of the rec committee and going through a lot of the drawings, a lot of the updates and stuff like that, I think it's great. I know we're shooting behind the power wall right now to get this thing done by December. So, by the choices that you guys made, I think that's a good choice. Those are going to be the, probably the bathrooms is going to utilize the ADA requirements more than, I think, Willowbrook would at this point. So, I'm in favor of it. I just want to make sure that we get it done by December, so.
Is that a motion approved?
Yes, the motion approved.
Motion approved, seconded by Alder Person Turchi.
Motion by Alder Person Kohler, seconded by Alder Person Turchi, authorizing appropriate city officials to execute the contract documents for the CDBG accessibility improvements at Independence and Woodlawn Union Parks with J. H. Hassinger of Menominee Falls.
Yes, Dennis.
This, the CDBG grant, that is money from the revolving loan fund that we had that had to be returned back to the state. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, that is also funding projects at Washington Heights and Hardhaven.
Yes, sir.
So, that's with the Citizen Participation Committee.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing not all those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose no. Motion carried. For adjournment, Alder Person Fulop. Nobody wants to adjourn, seconded by Alder Person Kohler.
Motion by...
Carol, I'm sorry.
Motion by Alder Person Fulop, seconded by Alder Person Carroll for adjournment at seven forty-three.
For adjournment, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose no. We stand adjourned. Thank you.